All right, we're going to call the meeting to order. We'll do a roll call.
Counsel Honan.
Here.
Counsel Fusillo.
Here.
Counsel Munson. Counsel Belcher.
Here.
Counsel DiMarco.
Here.
Counsel Aiello. Counsel Flakat. Vice President Ruggiero.
Here.
President Luteri.
Yeah. The chair anticipates going into executive session to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body if the chair so declares. I will ask for a motion to go into executive session. Motion by Counsel Belcher, second by Counsel DiMarco. I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Counsel Honan.
Yes.
Counsel Fusillo.
Yes.
Counsel Munson. Counsel Belcher.
Yes.
Counsel DiMarco.
Yes.
Counsel Aiello. Counsel Flakat. Vice President Ruggiero.
Yes.
President Luteri.
Yes. Going to call to order the town council meeting of April 5th, 2022 in the Harvey Hearing Room. This will also be on Zoom. The phone number will be 1-3-0-1-7-1-5-8-5-9-2. And the ID is 8-9-6-0-5-1-3-7-1-9-8. Pound sign. Roll call, please.
Counsel Honan.
Here.
Counsel Fusillo.
Here.
Counsel Munson.
Here.
Counsel Belcher.
Here.
Counsel DiMarco.
Here.
Counsel Aiello. Counsel Flakat.
Here.
Vice President Ruggiero.
Here.
President Luteri.
Yeah. I would ask us all to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Counsel Belcher.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have minutes circulated from the March 15th, 2022 meeting. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Counsel Belcher, second by Counsel DiMarco. Any additions, deletions, subtractions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Counsel Honan.
Yes.
Counsel Fusillo.
Yes.
Counsel Munson.
Yes.
Counsel Belcher.
Yes.
Counsel DiMarco.
Yes.
Counsel Aiello. Counsel Flakat.
Yes.
Vice President Ruggiero.
Yes.
President Luteri.
Yes. Now, we are going to continue old business, nomination of a town manager. Okay. I would like to thank once again our consultant paradigm associates, and more specifically, John Petron, for their incredible help throughout this process. I would also like to thank again our search committee for the many hours of hard work they put in and for doing their job remarkably well in producing three impeccably qualified candidates from which to choose. I can assure everyone that this process was meticulously done, transparent, and prompt. It has been one week shy of 11 months without a permanent town manager in place, and we have had much to deal with, including but not limited to closing out fiscal '21's budget, finalizing and implementing fiscal '22's budget, losing a CFO, an assessor, and a treasurer, along with a retiring fire chief. Throw in a town election, multiple new counselors, and obviously COVID, it has been anything but quiet. Leading us through this transition has been the remarkable Terry Delahanty, and I can't thank him enough. His leadership, compassion, and undying love for this town has been put on full display once again as an interim town manager, and we are very lucky to have him. The nomination I'm about to make was made extremely difficult because of the qualities, experience, and preparedness of all three candidates. All three took the time to get to know Winthrop by walking, driving the town, meeting the citizens, enjoying the beautiful views, eating at some of our restaurants, and reaching out to and meeting with our department heads. And they all, as one, equally very much enjoyed the process and appreciated what a special place Winthrop is. All three of these candidates have the core attributes that I believe would make them a good town manager for Winthrop. I can't say enough how thankful I am that they all took the time to apply, go through the rigorous process, and share with us all their qualities that they possess. In the end, I chose a candidate that I feel completely confident has all the skills, attributes, experience necessary to lead our town for the foreseeable future. A candidate that I fear would be in the best position to help us attain the most qualified candidates to fill our current voids. A candidate who is highly skilled in financial management and also understands the importance of delegating appropriately, as well as mentoring and coaching his staff. A candidate who I fear will be very accessible, approachable, and a hands-on manager. This candidate is very knowledgeable in terms of development, and I believe has a skill set to think outside the box when needed. This candidate understands the intricacies of a seaside community. This candidate has come up through the ranks and has been a department head, an assistant town manager, and a highly successful town manager. I am placing into name for nomination Anthony Marino to the position of Town Manager of the town of Winthrop. I will ask for discussion, and then I will ask for a roll call vote. Do I see any discussion? Counsel Munson.
I was thoroughly impressed by him in many ways. One of them was humor, but not really the most important one. His experience in a seaside town like Ipswich is a perfect fit for us. His energy level and articulation is exemplary. I'm thoroughly excited to have him on board, and I'm glad you chose him.
Vice President Ruggiero.
Just want to echo the comments that you made, Council President, in thanking our outgoing acting interim police chief town manager, Terry Delahanty. It's been a long road, and thank you for getting us to this point from the bottom of my heart, so.
Any other discussion? Counsel DiMarco.
I just, I want to say, Terry, I think you should probably stay on for the next couple years. I'm kidding. Kidding.
I have no regrets.
I just want to say, from my perspective, being on the search committee, it was truly a collaborative environment, and I'm really proud that, I think, in my perspective, we brought three totally competent candidates to the council. So I think all three candidates are competent. I intend to vote for whoever, or you already put up Marino, so, I mean, but, but no, I mean, I'm really proud of the work we did, and I think we did a good job.
Thank you. Any further comment? Denise, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Counsel Honan.
Yes.
Counsel Fusillo.
Yes.
Counsel Munson.
Yes.
Counsel Belcher.
Yes.
Counsel DiMarco.
Yes.
Counsel Aiello. Counsel Flakat.
Yes.
Vice President Ruggiero.
Yes.
President Luteri.
Yes. Congratulations to Mr. Marino. I will be asking John Petron to reach out to Mr. Marino this evening, as well as the other two candidates, please. I will try to be in touch with them tomorrow. I will try to make arrangements, and I will say that all three candidates had said there was a Finance Commission meeting this Thursday night, which the interim town manager will be attending. And all three candidates have said if they were selected that they would be available to come in to get a better grasp of our financial situation and the fiscal '23 process and budget. I will also contact Mr. Marino in the morning and set up a time where we could begin discussions of terms of employment and discuss possible start dates. I will also set up a special council meeting with the council to discuss any potential contract and get a vote of approval from them also. So I'm very encouraged. It's been a, it's been a long time. It hasn't been a long process. We've done this. My goal was always to get a new town manager here by June 1st, and I'm hopeful that that will happen now. But I thank everybody for their help along the process, and again, the search committee, and to John especially. Thank you very much. It's been, it's been quite an experience, and you guys did a fantastic job, and thank you for your service.
It's been our pleasure to be here, and thank you, and congratulations, and good luck. So hopefully you'll come to see me again.
I'm actually, John, I actually wish you would come to every town council meeting. I haven't met you.
I'm still in therapy after my 40 years in the business and retired, so thank you very much for the offer, though.
Thank you.
I'm glad you get to use your mic tonight.
I do, I got it.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay.
And I'll be talking to you as to the next steps.
Appreciate it. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Under general information and recommendations, I do want to have the council issue a citation to Jillian Dempsey. Jillian is a Winthrop native, Harvard grad, and just an incredible person, as well as a great hockey player, but she's a better person than, and no disrespect to her hockey talents, but she's a better person than a hockey player. She's just a great all-around kid, a great all-around young lady, and she was a huge part of the Boston Pride team that just won their second consecutive Isabel Cup, which would be the women's hockey version of the Stanley Cup, in the PHF League, the Premier Hockey Federation. Jillian leads the team. She's had so many attributes over her years, and I just want to officially thank her, and I'm hoping that she might be able to come to our next council meeting to accept this citation. So do I have a vote of confidence from the council on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who know, the ayes have it.
President Luteri, I would also add that there should be a citation for your daughter, who just won the Division III College National Championship. So I would like to put that forward as well.
That's fine. I'll ask for, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who know, the ayes have it. Thank you very much, Counsel DiMarco. I'll accept on her behalf, but no, thank you very much. Just some other general information for everyone. The Blue Line, and the dates are changing here and there, but my understanding is the Blue Line will be closed from the airport to downtown Boston from April 2nd to April 14th.
Mr. President, I talked to the MBT Police this afternoon. They have advised me, they postponed, due to the Haymarket incident, all resources have been diverted down there, and they'll get back to me as soon as that's back on track.
So I'd like to announce that the Blue Line will not be closing from the airport.
Sorry, Mr. President.
Downtown Boston. Okay, so my next thing would be the Sumner Tunnel, so you want to give me some, before I say anything? My understanding is, now it says spring, so we are already in spring, but from spring '22 to spring '23, there will be weekend closures of the Sumner Tunnel. So Sumner, I always remember like summer heading into town, so heading into town will be closed on the weekends from spring '22 to spring '23. During this time, traffic will be diverted, and from May '23 to September '23, there will be a full closure of the Sumner Tunnel. And then from the fall of '23 to the winter of '23, they will be back to weekend closures. There is a website, it's a big www, so just look at maskgov.info/sumnertunnel, and you'll find it, but I just wanted to give people a heads up on that also. We have now a public hearing that the town council vote to appropriate 290,000 in free cash for the shared expense line. So I will open that public hearing, and I will ask the chairman of finance if he has anything to say on this matter. That you, I believe you met this evening at a finance committee?
Yes.
And you discussed this, and if you could just tell us a little bit about what it entails.
Right, absolutely. So this would be, so this motion is coming out of free cash and includes things for electricity in the amount of $85,000, telecommunications in the amount of $30,000, fuel in the amount of $65,000, and insurance in the amount of $110,000. So after this motion, it would leave us with an amount of $215,731. So we met before this meeting, the finance committee, and we have come forth with a positive recommendation for the public.
So do I have anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, do I have anybody from the council who wishes to speak on this matter? All right, now, the majority of this is due, obviously, to the increase in energy prices. Obviously, gas is pretty easy, electricity the same. So we've also made adjustments in our fiscal '23 budget to be prepared for this, and hopefully costs come down, and we're able to save some money at the end of fiscal '23, and we're fortunate to be in a position that we're able to handle this this year. So there will be a motion coming in old business on this. Seeing nothing further, I will close the public hearing. Public comment, and I will, as always, just remind everyone it's a three-minute time, and I, as always, ask everybody to be respectful as they can, and I will entertain public comment now. Yes, just please raise Todd and state your name and precinct.
Todd Sackel, precinct two. I'm not going to stand for the whole thing. So Mr. Don, because I've got a few things I want to say. I think tonight should have been a historic night, and we should be celebrating the fact that we have a town manager. And unfortunately, the evening has been marked by an event that I will say, after having a lot of time to think about it, doesn't fall squarely on the shoulders of the person who committed the act, but falls squarely on the people who have made issue constantly out of things like race, creed, sexual orientation, skin color, skin tone, whatever. And now, because of this event, this act, this thing that was said, and I'm not sure if it was hateful or not, I have no idea. I don't know this person enough to be able to pass judgment on that. I walked in with that sign to make a point, that if it were me sitting in that seat that night, you'd be calling from my head, especially if it were me sitting in that seat that night, and it was a young black woman being interviewed, and I made some comment about, well, I'm not going to repeat, because I understand the sensitivities. The double standard that is on full display here is unbelievable to me because of the contortions and the pretzel twisting of a few of you on this council, who wanted to have a unified front, a non-binding resolution about a bill that didn't pass, so you could signal to the maybe five people in town that might suffer from this affliction that you're talking about, so you could tell them you were there. But in our own hometown, silence, absolute silence. So I don't know what to make of that. I've seen hate has no home signs here. How do we, how do you have any credibility on that now? Huh? There is absolutely, the council this evening needs to address this issue appropriately. At the end of the day, what was said, no matter the context, it was inappropriate. It certainly mars the talent that the pool of candidates in some way that we may not know about. I know, as an Italian man, if one of my bosses or someone who's taken my review had some issue with my ethnicity, I'd have concerns about working there, always. So even if it's not conscious, we can at least acknowledge that there might be something unconscious there. If we get an apology for this tonight, because I do think at the very least the town deserves an apology, but an apology short of a resignation is hollow. The council hasn't spoken on this as a council tonight. Again, plenty to say about every other creed except the white man or the white Italian man in this particular case. In fact, I remember underdog over there, Mr. Aiello, when he was coming to Paulie Purebend's rescue to have that non-binding resolution, but now nothing. So yeah, I'm a little unnerved about it, and I think something should happen. If you, if you really care about this community, and we really care about moving forward from all of this nonsense and this identity politics that has no place in Winthrop, be consistent. Either be consistently quiet about your ideations and your ideas about race and calling where it fits, or be consistent across the board. Thank you.
Any other comment? Yes.
Hi, I'm Gabriella Anderson, precinct four. So I'm very uncomfortable to be here tonight. It's really the last thing I want to do. But I was very uncomfortable when I was watching from home, and I was shocked. It really took me back. So I really don't know, Mrs. Flakat, although you are my precinct, in my precinct, represent us, but what I found really alarming was how you clearly said that you had been talking to people. And from those conversations and those discussions, people were concerned that the candidate was going to Italian up. I can't see how anyone could take that in any way but negative. I'm sure that you did not realize maybe the setting that you were currently in because you had been so comfortable talking to people about how uncomfortable Italian men are. That is what I found most alarming. Now, I totally understand why the other council members and the council president didn't say anything, because they too were shocked. And also, as many of the counselors are here in this room, are Italian men who felt like, well, I can't, I certainly can't correct her, because then I will be seen as being aggressive or as coming on strong on this lovely woman. So they were all uncertain of what to say or what to do, and I understand that, because I feel that same way tonight. Do I come? Do I voice my opinion? But after ranting and raving around my house and talking to my children about it nonstop, I said, no, I need to come. So you haven't made an apology, and this was several days ago, and there's an internet and there's an email system. So I think the apology is late, very late. It should have been that night at that meeting to the candidate, to the council, to the precincts, to the people that you represent. You do not represent the people of Winthrop. I found it to be a shocking statement that was made with such ease. So I too think that it's time for you to make a resignation and to step down. And it doesn't mean that you're a terrible person, it means you made a serious misstep. And also, I would like to take a greater look, because I don't really pay too close attention to things, but after that I did, and I found that there were other people involved in committees and representing the town in other ways that felt very freely to go on social media and speak about how they were concerned that there were only Italian men. And I found that to be shocking, that these conversations are being had so openly on public forums and taped interviews in front of everyone. I, I think that it's at a level now where I had to come here tonight and say, it doesn't represent me, I don't stand for it, and just like I'm appalled at any other form of prejudice or racism or minor aggressions, I just, this was, to me, a very big issue, and I'm concerned that maybe these conversations are loud, and maybe I don't hear them because I'm not so actively involved, or maybe because I have a vowel at the end of my name, you don't say it in front of me. I don't know. But I, I would never in a million years have thought that that conversation would have been had. So I personally think that the apology never came, it should have been immediately, and I think that you should step down and let someone else represent people for us. Thank you.
Yes.
Maryonda Gilletti, precinct one. I too was very appalled at what I saw in the interview process of, of the candidate and what was said to him, and knowing, I mean, this could be any ethnic person. It doesn't, it's not, this isn't just about Italian, it's about everyone concerned. And if this is being said about Italians, what is being said about other people? And what precedent did this set for the town of Winthrop? I'll tell you right now, if I was one of these three candidates and came in here to interview and had that said to me, I would have gone together, all three of us, and said, is this a town we really want to work in? You know, given the fact, like, get my Italian up? I mean, everybody can lose their cool, it doesn't matter what ethnicity you are or what gender you are. And I too feel a resignation is due to the town people and the taxpayers of Winthrop to not have this person represent a precinct. So that's how I feel. And my grandparents came here from Italy, they had a hard time, I've lived here all my life, right across the street, and they had a hard time when they came here. And this, we're going backwards, not forward. So we, we need to do something, and something needs to be done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
My name is Laura Lopez, I'm precinct four, you represent me in that precinct, and I honestly do believe at this time you need to resign. I'm sorry. Like, again, you probably are a very lovely person, but what you did that night was an atrocity to our heritage. I am a full-blooded Italian, and I'm proud of it. My father, my grandfather, my husband, my father-in-law are all Italian men, and what you did that night was a disgrace. Sorry, I do think you need to resign.
Sorry, minute, yes.
Can I address this person personally, or do I talk?
You can, but just state your name and precinct for the record.
From my side, precinct two. Ms. Flakat, I gotta tell you something, I really don't know you, don't know hardly anything about you. The only thing I know is what I heard you did a couple of weeks ago. I'm an eighty-year-old Italian gentleman, and I'm gonna tell you something. If it wasn't for myself, my nationality, other nationalities, you wouldn't be sitting here tonight, being able to talk like you talk, for what we've gone through in this country, and the wars we've been in and everything. So like I said, I found that totally insulting, racist, ain't even an apology. I wouldn't accept an apology, because inside of you, I think you're still, you, no, you can't say you're sorry. If you felt like that, you're gonna feel like that. No apology is gonna change the way you feel inside. You should be ashamed of yourself. And I back all these people in this room, what they said tonight, and I think you should resign, there's no place for people like you with the feelings you have in this town. I've been in this town for 76 years. I went to school here, brought family, I've been here before you probably even born. So again, your apology is gonna mean nothing to me, because you're still gonna feel inside of what you feel, of what you said. And I feel sorry for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry.
Thank you.
That's it.
Any other public comment on any item?
Nobody from DEI in the room? That's odd.
One, Bill.
So Bill Schmidt, precinct five. I was sitting over here during the interview, and quite frankly, I cringed when that question was asked. I heard the question, it wasn't, she was quoting someone who made that comment, and I thought it was definitely a poor choice of words at minimum. I thought an apology should be coming. I don't know if that's happened yet. I know myself, I've been, I'm seven years old, I know I've misspoke at times. Oftentimes, I've tried to be funny. I realized later that I probably said something that was hurtful. I've apologized. I also know people have made comments to me that have been hurtful. People probably don't know this, because my last name is Schmidt, but I'm half-Italian. My mom's Italian. Her family was Italian, both from Sicily and from Torino. So it affects me when people make comments, and I understand that. I was also brought up Catholic in this community, people probably don't know that. I was an altar boy when the mass was in attack, I mean, in Latin, excuse me. And I enjoyed as a boy hearing the parables, and one of the ones that always struck me the most was, "He is without sin, you cast the first stone." I think one of the things, unfortunately, where, happened too, too much in our society these days, is it's too easy to criticize. We have a lot of things going on Twitter, people make all kinds of comments that are inappropriate. My feeling is, an apology is necessary, that's important, but also the willingness to accept an apology is an important part of that equation. Otherwise, we don't move forward. We must be compassionate towards people when they make mistakes. We need to have a generous spirit. As the phrase goes, forgiveness is divine. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Any, yes, Jack.
Thank you. If there's no more comments from this discussion?
Name and precinct, Jack.
I just want to make sure everybody during this discussion was through. Thank you very much. Jack Dowd, precinct three. On a lighter note. While researching, I came across an interesting Winthrop While researching, I came across an interesting Winthrop history book. The name of the book is Winthrop Days and the Half-Century with the Trees. Eighteen fifty-five to nineteen oh five, published in nineteen oh five. The book describes various types of trees, numerous to list, but including great trees and fruit tree orchids, orchards. It is a fun read, and I hope everybody remembers the name. It's only thirty-five pages with pictures. It's a fun read about the people planting so many trees, their names are still familiar. The use of the fruit, the use of the fruit trees, I wrote this a month, two months ago, so I'm gonna stumble a little bit. The use of the fruit trees is obvious. And the planting of the other types of trees was to protect the fruit trees and to provide shade for the good people. Of course, times change. House slots were established and trees were removed. But now, there are different reasons the town needs to be replanting with greenery. To provide shade, of course, but more importantly, to provide oxygen to the people of Winthrop. We just have to go. I think, well, the beggar. I think everyone would agree that they would like to have oxygen for as long as possible. Right, Rob?
Absolutely.
You need it, right?
I need oxygen all the time.
Just gonna say, maybe the moon for you or whatever. Trees equal oxygen. Expansion of Logan Airport around the year 2000, including a new runway and a center taxiway which runs parallel to Court Road, is a real concern for the town. As was professed by Massport Group at a well-attended meeting at the Winthrop Arms five, eight years ago, the audience was informed that the benefits of the required stage-three aircraft engines were well mentioned, but they did not mention the drawbacks of these engines, which were required in the year 2000. All the aircrafts had to have stage-three aircraft engines. They're much quieter. A certain member of the audience did question the drawbacks of these engines. It was very disappointing for the Massport Group to have to explain that the use of these stage-three engines caused extreme amounts of VOCs to be emitted into the town of Winthrop. Alatile organic compounds. That was the verbiage back then. VOCs, steel oxygen that we need. Then, after that meeting, Massport then offered mitigation to the town. One of the aspects of this mitigation was to provide a greenery program. Massport agreed to give the town $2.5 million for this program. It was a good offer considering the circumstances at the time. None of that money was used for the greenery program. The money was used to build the DPW building, a worthy venture, but now we need trees. I would repress that all of the town council become involved in this endeavor of planting trees. A great number of trees should be planted as soon as possible so as to capture the pollutants from the aircraft and to provide oxygen to the good people. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Any other public comment?
With all due respect to this gentleman here. Do you realize how many branches off the trees you're holding in your hand now?
All right, it's public comment. Yeah, public comment. Any on Zoom? Do we have public comment on Zoom?
It was a branch manager at the time.
Don't hit Joe.
Okay, we have Celeste in audience. Celeste?
Hi, this is Celeste. Hey, man. I just wanted to call in and also express my, you know, how I feel about council woman Lockhart's comments. You know, I'm also an Italian-American. I brought up in Winthrop, my family moved here when I was very young. And I've also always been proud of coming from a community that had so many Italians that made me feel so comfortable with my heritage. That comment the other night just really hurt. And it hurts that we haven't had an apology, and it hurts that so many of us have had to take time away from our families tonight because you can hear my half-Italian little tone in the background. You know, we've all had to take time away so that we can speak up because it's not right if we don't. And I am afraid it'll fall on deaf ears, and I hope it doesn't. But I just, you know, I really hope at the very least we have some sort of apology and maybe a little recognition that, you know, being an Italian man or woman or anything is perfectly okay if not great. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Celeste. Any other?
I'm assuming, is this Corinne Walsh?
Yes, it is. Hi.
Hi, Corinne.
I really needed to come on tonight because that's where I watched the comments made by Ms. Lockhart. I was deeply disturbed. I'm an Italian-American. My parents are, came here, like, a lot of other people from East Boston, from an Italian-American community. And, you know, there's nothing wrong with being an Italian man. There's nothing wrong with having passion. And to have somebody during a job interview reasonably, openly, and casually ask if somebody's ethnic background would be a detriment if they were hired to that position? I just can't imagine in what world in 2022 that that's wise. And nobody has to apologize. There's no repercussions for it. You didn't say white. You didn't say any other ethnic group. You said Italians. And it was open and brazen and like another woman mentioned. What was the conversations behind closed doors like? Okay? Because if you're saying those things about Italian people behind closed doors, what are you saying about other ethnic groups behind closed doors? Other racial identity people who identify as different racial ethnicities? It's disturbing as a member of this community. We have such a diverse group of people moving into Winthrop. What message does it send to them that you're allowed to just say something like that about an ethnic group and get away with it? I'm so shocked. I understand there hasn't been an apology. If there was an apology, it would be worse. This is unacceptable. You're on the town council. You represent this town. In a government forum, it's mind-winding that you felt so comfortable asking this man if his Italian heritage is detrimental to impact his ability to do the job. I have nothing else to say other than that. I hope you resign because it's really an embarrassment to have you on there. Thank you.
Thank you, Corinne. Denise?
Diane, Diane Monica, did you wish to speak? Nope.
Corinne is still on.
Diane, did you want to speak? You have to unmute. She had it. Can't speak.
Hello, can you hear me now?
We can hear you, yes.
Hello?
Can you, can you hear us?
Very. Yes, I can hear you. I can hear you too, but very kind of you. Thanks very much. My name is Nick, but in my position as chairman of the municipal administration, the anti-defamation arm of the county authorities, and.
Tell her she's breaking up. It's gonna be on a cell phone.
I feel it's necessary that I do, you know, and then now.
Diane, you're breaking up.
County American Congress. Really?
If you'd like to send in an email?
Or call back for the second round of public comment?
Or call back for the second round of public comment?
Did we lose it?
Okay, I can check out what I have to. That is it.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else want, wish to speak? Anyone else wish to speak? Public comment? Yes?
I have a question. I don't think everyone wants to stay here for the whole meeting. I don't think you want us here. Is there gonna be something done or should we just go home?
I can't answer that question. Is that it for public comment? Yes, Council Lockhart, did you have something?
Yes, I would like to read the apology I thought we would read earlier.
Yes, and I apologize for not giving you the floor earlier.
I'm Barbara Lockhart, councillor for precinct four. At the special town council meeting on March thirty-one, during the interviewing of candidates for town manager, I quoted someone directly when I should have paraphrased. I understand that many people were offended by the comment, and I wish to apologize to everyone for my thoughtlessness. It certainly was not my intention to hurt anyone's feelings, and I'm deeply sorry that that was the outcome. I'm perfectly comfortable with Italian people. I grew up in New Jersey, where it was seventy-five percent Italian-Americans at the time. In the future, I will try to be more thoughtful in what I say.
Thank you. I'm gonna move on to correspondence now.
Is public comment over?
It is right now, but it will come back. I'm just gonna quick, well, not quickly. I'm gonna move on to correspondence. We received numerous correspondence, which I'll have Denise go over. There have been, many of those correspondents wished to be read. They can't be read into the record right now, but they are going to be scanned and attached as part of the minutes and as part of the public record. So they will be available for anybody to see. But Denise, do you have any, I mean, there were other correspondents also.
Yes, we had Julia Wallace had sent us support of the tree ordinance. Ally Sherwood had asked about the ferry start. And Mike Demento had sent an email in reference to Ingleside Park.
And there were other correspondents, obviously, in relation to this.
issues like with their names. I can read the names of their.
Sure.
Okay, we have correspondents referencing this, Gus Martucci, Marion Nicoletta, Calvin Cappuccio, Melissa Ferrara, Shannon Pulos, Carla Vitale, and Julie Barry.
Thank you. There was one committee report, Finance Committee, councillor Fisello.
So yes, we had one motion in front of us today when we met earlier, which was, and it reads, I move that the town council vote to appropriate certified free cash to the below shared expense lines that after analysis by the finance department are anticipated to end of year over budget or take any other action thereto, in which I had mentioned earlier includes electricity for the amount of $85,000, telecommunications for the amount of $30,000, fuel for the amount of $65,000, and insurance for the amount of $110,000, leaving us with an ending free cash balance of $215,731. After meeting and talking about this, the finance committee has come out with a unanimous positive recommendation.
Okay, thank you. And we'll just take that vote up and old business. Town managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. President. A very exciting night naming a new town manager. I look forward to transitioning that new town manager into Winthrop along with the help of Robbie Powes, who's been the unsung hero here in Winthrop, helping me keep the budgets balanced to keeping this year on track and building the budget for next year as well as Steve Cerulli. So without those two gentlemen, you know, I would not be able to have done a sufficient job. So thank you to those two gentlemen. Just in my conversations this afternoon with the MBTA police, they are working closely with the state so we wouldn't have the tunnel and the trains shut down at the same time. So they're coordinating that work. So you might see some of these start dates pushed around a little bit. Especially in, once the Haymarket situation gets settled, I think the T will go first, and then you'll see the tunnel pudge in. So I was happy to hear that and relieved. The council president has asked me to look into an engineering traffic study and design for the East Boston-Winthrop entrance as well as Pleasant Main Street. You know, I think it's a, I've received emails from other councillors on this as well. But I think it's a great opportunity to have in our planning department and have our planners start to look at that. I think that's the right place. Now that we have a planner, we can get some of these bigger projects under their wing with coordination with DPW since he's in charge of sidewalks and streets. I want that to be coordinated fairly well. So Rachel knows about this. She's been in on the email as of today, and will start looking for some grant funding to establish that. I know there was a comment about some old funding that town manager Faison had. I'll ask Robbie to scrub the special revenue accounts, but there's no revenue that I have seen in any of the reports that I've reviewed. So, and then we'll come before council with a short-term plan and a long-term plan. And then it'll be up to the council to vote either one of those plans. The middle school land survey, you know, this is something I wanted to, let's get this discussion ongoing. I don't want the new manager to come in. He's gonna have to hire a lot of people and then actually have to get projects started. So if we can get some of the things in queue for the new town manager, land survey should have been done years ago. We're far behind. So we need a, I'm moving forward with getting prices for our land survey. We'll come before council for funding. I mean, I'm getting it from three different surveyors, so we'll have a good balanced approach. But we really, as of right now, the rink is excluded from this project as a council vote that took place some years ago and not by this council June fifth, 2018, to be exact. So the rink is excluded, so we have to subdivide a lot to make sure the rink lot is subdivided from the auditorium and the middle school lot. But we've had a lot of people look at this land and look at, by looking at documents. But we want the surveyor out. We want them to see it. We want them to feel it. We want the stakes to be in, making sure that we're not in Ingleside Park, assuring us that that has nothing to do with the Ingles deed, and then move forward from there. And that'll be almost ready for our RP at that point. You get soil testing you should do, and you get traffic engineering studies that we should be looking at down there. But I think the new town manager has some experience in moving these projects along. I just want to get him to the point where he can come in and feel that we're not so far behind. Let's put it that way. The Spring Fling is May twenty-first. Sean from Parks and Recs, Sean Driscoll, has put together a spring festival, and Spring Fling, I call it. So the police department will participate, as well as Bike Winthrop. We'll have a bike rodeo. Mass Bike will come in with instructors. We'll give away bike helmets from the police department for any child that needs a new bike helmet. So that's something to look forward to. On the same day, we have the Massachusetts Conference of Police Explorers here. They will use the rink parking lot in the Coming School, behind the Coming School, and inside the Coming School, which has all been authorized by the superintendent. So we'll have multiple things going on that day that people can come out and watch. Sean Driscoll has done a great job with flag football. The next ten weeks, there's 287 kids signed up for this program. We've worked with the superintendent of schools to make sure we could have it at Miller's Field so he can run multiple games at the same time on that larger field. So we're excited about that. And speaking of Miller's Field, we need to decide ownership. This is a lingering thing. I think we've had discussions about the tennis courts. We had discussions about Miller's Field. We voted to retain ownership of the tennis courts, but we don't, we have not voted what we're doing with Miller's Field. Is it gonna be retained by us? Is it going back to the school? If it's gonna be retained by us, how are we gonna maintain it? Under what department are we putting that to be maintained? Um, if it's gonna be retained by us, how are we gonna maintain it? Um, under what department are we putting that to be maintained? And do we have enough funds, um, to be putting away to save for that turf, which is now, we're four years into, into this, this turf? So that eight to ten-year line is now four to six-year line, right? And it's about eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, I had the, the, uh, opportunity to be over at the Malden Catholic, and you could see their field is starting to have some deterioration. They're gonna need to be replacing, so I could see what's coming our way a little bit. The council president has asked us to coordinate, and Denise has, has done some work on this, the dedication of the tennis courts. Um, and Denise will send out, uh, an email. I believe it's the first boy, boys game.
Yeah, we had, originally, we were trying to do the first home game, but, um, we really feel that Marie Finn has had a huge part in this process, and, uh, we wanted her to be able to attend in the first boys' home game, uh, home match, is I believe May second, so that is the date we're looking for, for a rededication.
Yes, excuse me.
Of Wallace and McLean. We're not changing the name or anything like that, but we would like to have a dedication. And we would like, uh, Marie to be involved with that, 'cause she's been such a big part of the tennis program.
Thank you. Uh, the IT study is moving forward. I've signed on the towns end. Um, the Collin Center is now signing the agreement, and then we'll get them in here and start the work on the IT. Um, the, the better news is we have a full twenty-twenty-four. We have to wait for the money through Homeland Security. A full town, school, police, fire, all of our networks would be looked at by Homeland Security and determine, um, infrastructure changes or security changes that we need and throughout the town. Um, so they were interested in funding that based on what happened with the schools and, uh, based on what we put forward, and Robbie was a big part of that. UASI, uh, conversation and getting them in here, but we, that's gonna be two years out, so we do take this, take the Collin Center in now. Let's, let's fix what we can fix here in Town Hall and see what department we, the department should look like, and fund that department to where they tell us to, what we need, and then, um, look at it again in two years and see what other uh, infrastructure changes and security changes are needed for the town. So, um, I'm, I'm happy to report that. The wage study is in process, so I, I have, um, a couple of requests in from a couple of different other companies just to check the price on the Collin Center, and once I, I feel comfortable, I will get that. Um, the DBW director has reported the Mesa filings, uh, are in order. It's gonna go before the COMCOM here in Winthrop, and the state has signed off on it. Steve, is that correct?
Yeah, they gave their own ranking issues.
So that will allow the DBW to get back on Nero Beach and start the, the raking. The berm has been knocked down. The winter berm has been knocked down. He will, uh, begin raking in May, about the second week of May, and that'll be every Friday from that point until the end of the summer. Um, so I thank him and, um, his staff for that. Uh, water and sewer, um, I've asked Director Calla, uh, so to get some estimates of eleven hundred and forty, um, meters that need to be replaced. Uh, he's come in with an estimate of four hundred to six hundred thousand dollars based on, you know, three fifty to four hundred dollars a meter. Um, you know, that's just approximates that we've grabbed other communities and found out what they got their replacement costs for. Uh, Woodward and Curran has, uh, done a project up in Lawrence, and we looked at what they were charged. Um, so, uh, to get all the meters done at once and to get them done quicker than we're doing them, it's gonna, once we get this, uh, RFP and out the bid, it's gonna be about four hundred to six hundred thousand, uh, dollars, which increases the water and sewer rate. Um, so I mean, every borrowing we have, it increases. So we're asking MWRA if they have any low-interest loans or zero-interest loans, preferably, um, for water meter switchouts in, in the sea. In that same remark, I've asked, uh, MWRA liaison, uh, board member, uh, Chief, uh, Paul Flanagan to, uh, set up a meeting between me and Fred Lasky, um, to discuss, um, looking at the meter or coming into Winthrop and, um, to agree and try to get to agreement that they will do PTO tests and will have observers, uh, environmental sciences, which did the report, observe the PTO test to give us confidence that that, that meter is accurate and, um, and give the public confidence. I have confidence, and I want the public to have the same confidence, uh, in that. So I will, uh, report back to the council on that and how we make out. Um, earmarks, Representative Turco through the OPIS funding has secured a hundred thousand dollar earmark. DBW director has submitted, um, a request for that money, and that that's for sidewalks. And then there was a fifty thousand dollar earmark, uh, again, Representative Turco, uh, for the public safety, uh, building, and that would help us with design and get through the design phase of the public safety building. So we haven't forgotten about that project. We're just looking for funding to continue on with that project. I'll bring up a, uh, probably a touchy subject with the council, four thirteen, four fifteen, Shirley Street. Uh, a couple months back, um, I asked if we wanted to, if we were interested in selling a square patch of land that's actually in the Veterans Roadside. Um, and this land is right across from the firehouse on Shirley Street. Um, the owners of that building, um, wanted, wanted to buy the land, but we have a, um, a public, uh, transparency process through our, our charter as well as thirty B that we advertise what we're gonna sell, and we accept, um, you know, bids on that advertisement. So if the council, um, I did get a positive response last time. He had a big, big, um, truck over there that some of the councils showed concern with. Um, he's fenced some of that in out of necessity. I talked to him yesterday and asked him about that fence. Since he doesn't own the property, I was concerned that, um, him occupying and the man that he was occupying, he said, well, I get NIPs dumped there, and I've had syringes dumped here. I'm trying to fence it off till I, I don't have to keep coming over here and picking up this. Um, again, he expressed interest in, in the leasing or purchasing it. Um, again, where its disposition of property, it's the council's decision whether or not we wanna dispose of that property. So, uh, you know, again, I would like, look for direction from the council on that. Um, I've signed off on the statewide opiate settlement agreement that's, uh, we started when I was up here in two thousand and seventeen. Um, the agreement has been approved by the Attorney General's Office, uh, and we do get money, uh, from the settlement, and that money has to be, um, spent, um, towards disorders, uh, behavioral health needs that occurred, um, together with the, with the opiate, uh, pandemic. Um, and we're still in that opiate pandemic. So Meredith Hurley will, will get, um, all, all the funds, um, and we will take some of the, I think we already have taken some of the general revenue funds and replaced it with this opiate fund only out of necessity um, because of the, um, health insurance came in much higher than expected. We had a five-point-two in the budget, and it came in over seven percent, uh, for next year. So me and Robbie had to go back and scrub that budget once again. Uh, autism patches and T-shirts are available at the police department as well as select, um, shops around town. Um, all the money goes to the Doug Foodie Foundation, so please support, um, the Art, Autism Foundation and, um, help out Doug Foodie's, um, foundation. Explorers, I mentioned the Explorers Conference. Uh, there's a touratory tree drive looking for toothbrushes, deodorant, tear brushes, combs. Uh, again, public health, along with the National Honor Society's running this drive, and it's the, it's to go to the people that we're helping and the people that are in need, whether, um, uh, they're recovering from addiction or we're trying to get into recovery. Uh, it's a good cause. Anyone that can, uh, spare some extra, uh, cash and purchase some of these things, uh, would be greatly appreciated. There's a box in Town Hall, um, the center of Town Hall on the first floor, and the library as well as select businesses across, uh, the town. Uh, Parks and Recs Youth Summer Job Application is now available online. It must be received by four twelve, which is next week. So anyone with children looking to get them some money and get them out of your house during the summer, this is a great opportunity. Um, I'm trying to convince my kids. Uh, the ferry, um, you know, I've gotten some emails on the ferry. I've coordinated, I've been coordinating with the MAST DOT about the ferry. I've sent my report in, uh, for the last ferry season. Um, looking for a slightly over eighty-one thousand dollars to close deficits for last year. Uh, in my report, I projected out for next year of a deficit of a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. Uh, fuel cost increases running at seven days a week and everything else. Um, they responded back to me by email, asking me if I'm looking to cover the deficit for next year. I said, yes, I am, but my understanding was the grants this year were for this fiscal year only and could not be expanded. Uh, they had not gotten back to me. So we have, right now, I have no funding starting this April to run the ferry. Now, keep in mind, the longer we wait for funding, the less I can do it. So the boat still has to go up to Gloucester. It has to be pulled out. It has to be inspected by the Coast Guard. We have to bring back, um, laid-off employees. Uh, you know, we gotta see if they're willing to come back. Last year, we had trouble fighting captains, and people pay him more than we are. So the captain, we're paying twenty-something, uh, oh, twenty dollars an hour. In Boston, they're getting twenty-six to twenty-eight dollars an hour, uh, to be a captain. So, you know, we have that as well. So I just wanna make sure everyone is informed about the ferry, inform my intention. I cannot run the ferry without, and Robbie's sitting over there. Um, he will not let me touch that boat unless I have funding secured. Um, and rightfully so. He tells me I can't do a lot of things, and it's for the betterment of the town. Um, and again, you know, we have to either wait for the state or, uh, the council has to appropriate money. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Jesus, a lame duck now. You seem to be going longer and longer.
Now I got a lot of stuff to finish up before the new guy gets here.
A couple of things, and then I'll ask Counselor DiMarco. I do, I, I am, um, hoping that you might get some sort of answer by this weekend on the ferry, which, you know, hopefully will be positive, especially with the T and everything else going on. It would be good if we can do, but you can't do it without the money. I will ask also if you find out on Ingleside Park. We spent a lot of money last year to re, redo that, um, playground area, and there are still zero swings. Now, we're into the swing, the swing, the spring of twenty-twenty-two, and, uh, there's only one swing in the tot playground, which was from before. If we can make sure that is replaced in a timely manner and get the swings that were never put in from when we just spent a hundred and something grand to redo that playground.
Mr. President, I, it was an oversight in my report. I talked to, uh, Parks and Recs Director, and there will be swings this spring. Um, he has the swings in. He's waiting for the hardware. He's, he anticipates the hardware arriving, um, by this weekend. So, uh, I'm glad to report back to you on that.
Thank you for that. And Counselor DiMarco, did you have something?
Yeah, uh, chief, what's the, uh, what is the cost for the inspection of the, of the boat?
Well, it's, it's not so much the cost of the inspection. It's, it's getting the crew back. It's putting the crew on the boat. Like, no one's coming back for a day.
Yeah.
Right? So it's getting it up, up to Gloucester and.
So you have to get, but you have to get up to Gloucester, and it has to be inspected. Like, what's, what's the price tab on that?
Well, again, I can't do it without a captain, so I gotta bring the captains back to work. Like, and again, they, you know, they get laid off and they collect.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, if that, we're committed to them and saying there's gonna be a season.
Yeah.
They'll come back and do it.
Yeah.
Um, but I can't, you know, I can't commit that.
You can't commit. Yeah, okay. I understand. Thank you.
Vice President, Rogerio.
Uh, thank you, Council President. Um, I'm really happy to hear that we're gonna start looking at the East Boston to Winthrop connection intersection. I think, um, we kinda, we talk about development in town, and that's really one area that we don't really realize, but that, that, at least in my lifetime, has gone through, uh, a significant amount of development. I mean, I remember when the Dunkin' Donuts was going there. That was a huge deal. And now that plaza across the street, that's all brand new. We have a restaurant, we have two restaurants there, uh, uh, you know, medical facility. So, um, I think it's great that we're finally starting to look at that and making some changes that are commensurate with the, the traffic and, and the, the business that's going on in that area, not to mention Atlantis Marina right there, too, which is another whole set of people. So I appreciate hearing that. And then, um, just a question on the other side of town. Uh, the TIPS project, I see that the streets are all carved up, uh, marked off, ready to go. Um, do we have an update on that?
Sure.
I think that's the one thing you didn't talk about, and so I hate to, you know.
There's only so much paper. I'm trying to save trees so you get oxygen. So, yeah, so, man, we had a meeting yesterday in my office with Director Calla, uh, about the TIPS project, um, as well. Um, so we, you know, KMP is telling us it's a three to four-month turnaround on the title searches. Um, and then we have to, uh, go out and assess, and hire an assessor.
Sure.
To assess, um, a appraiser, excuse me, to appraise the property that we're gonna be taking temporarily or permanently. And then we'll be before the council looking for money. So, um, there, you'll be getting a request probably next week, uh, next meeting, um, on about a, for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and that's, A, to pay the, the, uh, engineer to get it to a full design and get us to complete all the way to the start of the project, and some money for KMP to be doing these title searches.
Okay.
Um, so we're told three to four months on the title searches, and then we'll start looking for appraisers, and then we'll be back for money for the appra, the appraisers.
Can we, can we break ground before that process or?
No.
No, we can't.
Everything's on a schedule and on a timeline.
Ready to go, waiting on this.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think the markings you're seeing.
Is that for a different project?
That is.
Same project. That's the utility markings. That's, that's for the final, making sure that there's no conflicts.
Okay.
We do have another project in that area that Steve diverted the crew from Violet over to, to rectify.
Got it.
Um, there was a main that had a, that was in need of repair. It took six weeks to get the pipe here. Um, and that's right on the corner of Revia Street coming inbound.
Yeah.
Uh, and we'll hope when, once we fix that, that some of the issues with the color, color form, um, might help resolve.
All right, awesome. Thank you.
And before I go to Counsel Manzen, just on the, on the entrance, I mean, that's been a passion of mine. I just think it's extremely important. We're trying to be, um, a little ahead of the curve. I mean, we have Revia Street going on that, you know, and that's gonna be a while, but we wanna be ready with some sort of solution instead of waiting for three years or two years and then saying, okay, let's start the process. Because it is, um, it, to me, it's just an accident waiting to happen up there, and we wanna be prepared for that. Counsel Manzen.
Thank you, President. Terry. Um, thank you, Terry, for a pretty exhaustive town manager report. Um, a lot going on there. Um, I just wanted to ask, uh, two questions, and also thanks Steve Calla and yourself for following up on the water quality things I've been in the background trying to like get to the bottom of the, of report I saw with the color form. And Beverly Anderson from MWRA, she responded to me in saying that Winthrop's in compliance, that the color form may be high, but there's been no Ecolive, uh, test, uh, any, any, any samples of Ecolive in the water. So I feel confident in that the water is very safe to drink, and, and, and thank you guys for, you know, stepping up and doing your jobs. Um, I also wanted to thank the Executive Search Committee for a great job and getting a great group of people. But I wanted to ask you two questions. One was the, um, the survey, and you said there was a process in getting, um, obviously, getting the pricing for a land survey, but what is the process in getting that, um, subdivision to happen? And, and can you just walk us through that in a brief way?
Sure. It'd be very brief, though. So, you know, uh, any subdivision by our own, uh, ordinances, zoning, um, needs to go to, to the planning board for authorization to subdivide. Um, so that, all properties. It doesn't exclude municipal government properties. So, uh, we'd have the engineer come out and surveyor come out, surveyor slash engineer come out. Um, they would do all the work, and then we'd submit the plans, um, through the council, which would then refer it to the planning board. The planning board then would have forty-five days, um, to take appropriate action.
Could they be faster than that or?
Of course, yeah. But the, the law says it gives them a time, you know, you can't just drag it out forever. Um, so it's, it, the, the law, um, puts a time limit on it, the forty-eight.
Okay, great. And then as my, uh, uh, other question I had was regarding the ferry and MBTA. Is there any liaison or any kind of communication going on with the MBTA?
So Mastod is the, the liaison for all transportation. The ferry falls on the Mastod, um, as well, you know, the T falls on the, on the Mastod as well. So it's, it's kinda all connected, and we've been working through Mastod. They, uh, completely understand our plan and our efforts of trying to get this to be a regional ferry and trying to get someone else, um, to kinda run it. Um, you know, again, if we're gonna open it, we need to have a ferry person that runs ferries and has run ferries in the past manage that, that ferry.
Great. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? All right. Well, thank you. Let's go into the School Department report. The school committee met, um, March twenty-eighth. And, um, the major topic was the operating budget, which they, which they did pass. They passed a needs-based budget which accounted for the operating part, twenty-five million, six oh-three, six seventy-two, um, including grants, twenty-seven million, four ninety-nine, seven thirty-seven. Um, so that was passed by the school committee, and there will, uh, depending on the allocation that's given, that's appropriated by the town, they will have to readjust that, depend on that, depending on that. Um, some public relations from the schools. Uh, the following students did receive John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, Annalise Bruno, Aiden Dentrement, Dentrement? Maggie Duong, Anwar Edabawi, William Gillis, Ari Hain, Ryan Cifory, Ramsey Kaladi, William McClellan, Mc, McMullen, and Brandon Morgan. And the Winter Drama Society, now this is a week old, so I will update it after, but at this point, the Winter Drama Society had moved on to the regional finals with their production of Everyman, and they were awarded Best Ensemble Award. were awarded Best Ensemble Awards for the following, uh, Stage Manager Award to Jolina Zakari, Acting Awards Tess Scout Thompson, Master Carpentry Award Brandon Morgan, Acting Award Sarah Delahanti, Acting Award Dan Tracy, Lighting Award Jennifer Hickey. And they will be, they did perform in the regionals on Saturday at North Reading High and they did win. So congratulations to the Drama Society. Again, they do an incredible job at the high school with drama. Um, and I'm very proud of them and happy to be able to report that. And that is it for the school committee report. Old business, we do have a motion coming out of finance for 290,000 from Certified Free Cash to go to the shared expense lines. If, if Counselor Fusillo could read that motion?
Yes, the motion reads, I move that the town council vote to appropriate, uh, certified free cash to the below shared expense lines that after analysis by the finance department are anticipated to end of year over budget or take any other action thereto.
Okay, there's a motion coming out of finance with positive recommendation, does not require a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council Fusillo?
Yes.
Council Munson?
Yes.
Council Belcher?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Ayalo?
Council Flacott?
Yes.
Vice President Ruggiero?
Yes.
President Leto.
Uh, yes. New business, town council declare a surplus in 1991 Boston Whaler, 25 Guardian, thereby authorizing the treasurer collected a post for sale through an approved auction site or take any other action relative thereto. I will move that to finance, refer that to finance. There is a motion. Also, I will ask for a motion to suspend council rules for the April, the second meeting in April, um, to ask for, to suspend the rules to move the meeting from April 19th to April 26th. The reason for that is that is when the spring forum will take place and we'll have a meeting at 6:00 PM. Do I have a motion to suspend council rules?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion by Consul DeMarco, second by Consul Belcher. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Say no, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. Um, also I'd have, uh, one of the candidates that interviewed, and forgive me for not, I'm pretty sure I know which one, but I don't wanna say it 'cause I might be wrong. So had discussed about a, a diversity committee that they had in their town. And one of the thoughts, or one of the things that they brought to the table was they included, um, a liaison from the town, including the town manager, police department and someone from the school administration, I believe. And it wasn't, they weren't voting members or anything, but I think it's a good idea. I'd like to send that to committee on committees to see if that's something that we might like to adopt, to have that connection between the two, between the two entities. Um, so I will ask for that to go to committee on committees. There was a tri-ordinance that was submitted by Consular Honan. I would like to send that to Rules and Ordinance. Um, is there any, and only because Consular Honan, I don't believe you're on Rules and Ordinance, so I just wanna make sure it goes to Rules and Ordinance. I, Rules and Ordinance, I thank you for the motion and so that could be set up, please. Um, also I'd like to, um, probably the first or second meeting in May have a goal-setting meeting for the council. This is something that I talked about, um, one of our first meetings and I don't wanna let it slip away. And I think now with a, uh, new town manager coming in, it will be a good opportunity for us to get together for that. I do have a few appointments. First is that the town council accept the appointment made by President Leto of Karen Blake as a committee member on the Winthrop Cultural Council for the town of Winthrop. Karen is new to our town and looking forward to dealing with this committee as she has a certification in interior design, looks forward to getting more involved from our, um, and more involvement from our town residents. Um, do I have any discussion on that appointment? Seeing none, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Congratulations, Karen. I would also like to make an appointment, that the town council accept the appointment made by Council President Leto of David Stagio is a member of the Board of Assessors for the town of Winthrop. Dave has been a member and chair of the planning board for several years, an active lawyer in our community and looks forward to serving on the assessing board. Um, I would ask for a, any discussion on that. Seeing none, I'll ask for a, um, a positive vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. And the last appointment I have would be, town council accept the appointment made by Council President Leto of Joanne Hillman as a committee member of, on the tree committee for the town of Winthrop. Uh, Joanne has been a longtime chair and member of the Winthrop Cultural Council and director of the Clock Tower Gallery. She's also president and founder of Winthrop Loves Trees, a nonprofit citizen group. Um, I would ask for a positive vote on that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. And thank you to Joanne, Dave, and Karen for volunteering and becoming more involved in the town administration. I will now open it up for a second round of public comment. And I will start with in-house first. Skip, yes.
Question?
Yes.
For the council. In our town charter, is there anything that could be done to have a recall on a public, elected public official to be recalled? Is there anything that I
There is not, there is no provision in the, in the charter as currently constituted for recall provision. The charter is currently under review now. There's a committee that's doing an ordinance and charter review. It could be something that they take up. The meetings are public. I think there's a meeting tomorrow night. If you had a desire to, to make a comment of that. I, I believe there's a public hearing too coming up for all, uh, ordinance changes and charter review changes.
So in other words, anything shot of a criminal offense, I mean, something serious, none of you members could be taken off of this council until the term ends? Am I correct?
As the charter reads now, I think the only provision to, for removal, and I could be wrong, I'm not swearing to this, but I'm pretty sure, the only removal process of a council now is a, um, attendance policy, that they have to make 50% of the meetings in a calendar year.
Assuming shot of some kind of criminal offense, if they are
Well, obviously.
You know, okay. But other than that?
There is no provision, no recall provision as of now in the charter. Correct?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Gabrielle.
Hi.
Again, just repeat your name.
Sure, Gabrielle, as we've before. Um, so Mr. Schmidt talked about forgiveness and I see where he was going with that, what he was trying to feel. And I understand Italian Americans, a little more Catholic, he was trying to guilt us a little. We know a lot about guilt. Um, and I listened to it and I paused. And I thought, okay, I'm, I'm gonna go for it. I'm gonna give an open hat. Mrs. Flacott, your apology felt so short. It was dismissive. I'm actually more disappointed in you and more convinced that you are not fit to sit on this council. You looked at us after what you just heard. And by the way, it was very hard to say these words to you both before and now because it is not something I take any pleasure in. For you to say that you apologize for paraphrasing your hate speech tells me you are simply not fit. You do not understand or you think it's acceptable to say inappropriate things based on someone's culture. And I wanna say something else. I see other people in town with banners and signs and a lot of talk, but I don't see any action behind it. I am unimpressed with the groups in town that wanna say that we're united and we care. Right now, right at this moment, we have someone sitting on the council using hate speech. And it doesn't seem to be upsetting anyone. I don't see those same people here tonight speaking out. Matter of fact, some of them are participating in it on public forums. So I'm really concerned and your apology or lack thereof makes me more concerned. You were so dismissive of what you said. I'm sorry you're not fit to sit on the council. Mr. Schmidt, I consider my forgiveness.
Yes.
Um, first, uh
God's echo, please sing two.
Thank you for walking me through the process. Um, first, I'm completely flabbergasted that this council has not addressed this, that the townspeople, we elect you to do this stuff and you're sitting there like, like deer in a headlights. And I realize some of you are rookies and this is intense. Welcome to the bigs. It's a little tough to do this with a camera on you and when your own ideology is kinda slapping you in the face. I know that's kinda lousy. But I too wanna be gracious and I'm gonna take a different approach, Mrs. Flacott. I wanna context, please, 'cause my friend Hannah and I talk about this a lot. It matters. For me, my experiences with you have been you likened me to a racist because of my hat, Gadsden hat, when I came to the Rules and Ordinance's meeting. You called my hat racist. That, that pretty much equates me to, in my opinion. Um, and then this. And then your apology and something struck me. So I wanna give you another opportunity to win with this apology, even though I admittedly, you have to resign from me, but at least I'll feel better about the words. 'Cause right now they're just words. You claimed, you repeated what you heard. First question, when you heard this, you didn't find that offensive? You don't have to answer that. What, now that you've had the chance to think about this, what would you do now? What, how would you change that question right now?
This, this really is
If you don't wanna answer it, that's perfectly fine, but
Yeah, this is, this is more of a comment period than a question and answer period.
Okay, okay.
Are there any more public comments? Is there anything, uh, I'm sorry. Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Elizabeth Sorrentino, I mean, y'all pretty soon. Um, my family came here from Italy and my grandparents fell in love with a house in Winthrop. They were not allowed to buy it because they were dirty Italians. The owner would not sell to them. They ended up buying a house in East Boston because the real estate broker hid the fact that they were an Italian family. So they did buy the house, but at the passing, that's when the owner found out that they were Italian. Um, I feel like we're going backwards. We're not going forward anymore. And I keep hearing, you know, love thy neighbor and, you know, let's all hold hands and sing kumbaya, but not the dirty Italians. It's, we're going backwards. It's not right.
Jim, this, this comes out to, to me, one thing. This woman, it started all about Italians. This is all nationalities. I believe this woman is gonna, every bone in her body is racist. Italians, Jews, Irish, black. That's my feelings. That's my personal opinion. Her, she's full of racism. It doesn't, it's not only toward the Italians, I believe. I believe she's against, anybody that doesn't fit her agenda, she's against.
Thank you. Uh, Jack?
Thank you.
Jacked out?
Jacked out, preaching three. The tree, yeah. No, it's not about the tree. I, I asked a previous council meeting, uh, a question concerning water quality. I don't wanna accept offhand remarks about the water quality in this town. There is a statistical page from the Mass Water Resource and people wrote that page. And Winthrop's, uh, positiveness of color form is off the charts. It's way bigger than everybody else's. So I'd like the person that wrote that page or the Mass Water Resource or somebody to come down to this town council meeting and explain those pages and, and what we can do about fixing the problem that we obviously have. I'm not accepting offhand, uh, remarks about the quality of the water. Thank you. The second thing is, um, survey for the middle school site. As far as I'm concerned, and I've brought this to the attention of many, many people in this town about Ingles Park. And I'll be laying the paperwork. I, I've laid it before councils and, and groups and people. I'll be laying it on the desk of the new town manager. I believe the only parcel of land that can be sold is the parcel of land on the corner of Pauline Street and Waldemire. Old maps consider this a piece of property to be, uh, 1.21 acres. The new maps that were given to the town council using the GIS mapping system that's online, if you look it up in the assessors office, which you're not supposed to use for any reason for contracts or anything like that. I believe we don't have to spend any money on a survey. I've already researched that land up there. I have the data. It'll be a simple survey. If you just use that one parcel as something to be sold. Otherwise, it's Ingleside Park. Instead of stretching the survey all the way down Pauline Street, all the way down Walden Street, up to Lincoln, et cetera, et cetera. If you just consider, and you can ask a, a construction company or contracting company to consider paying for the survey themselves. If they're interested in buying the property, they would do that for you. It'll, it'll, it'll be a nominal fee for them, where it could be an extravagant fee for the town of Winthrop. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Anything on, yes.
Diane Moniker again. Diane, can you hear us? You have to unmute.
Unmuted. I am unmuted.
Good.
Yes, we can.
I think she's using a cellphone. She must be walking.
She muted again. You're muted again.
Unre-mute.
Unmuted. Okay, I'm sorry. Don't judge me on my technical skills, please. Um, at first, I'd like to thank Council for allowing me the chance to speak. I do know, having certain public access myself, that it's not an easy job. Um, it's one that requires, you know, constant attention and I think openness to the public's concerns. So that being said, I shall proceed. Um, I have the Commission for Social Justice, uh, which is the Anti-Defamation Hall of the Sons and Dogs of Italy in Massachusetts. They are self-chaperated throughout the organization. Um, and the one in Massachusetts, uh, works with our, our sons and daughters of Italy, uh, which is, um, represents 5,000 people of Italian, American origin and, uh, one of the largest and oldest organizations.
She called again.
Pretty long story.
Oh.
Pleasure.
Pleasure.
Maybe we'll get her back.
Shannon Pullos, can you unmute, please?
Hi, this is Shannon Pullos, preaching three. Um, I won't reiterate all the comments others have made around the anger I feel about the blatant discrimination, um, that was displayed in a public forum, um, in an, in an interview by a public official. I've already expressed that to the town council through my letter to the council. Um, however, now that the meeting is coming to a close and it's clear that, that there has and will be a lack of proper acknowledgement and action by this town councilor and other town council members and a lack of genuine apology that can only have been done through resignation, I feel compelled to express further the hypocrisy that is so blatant by so many on this town council and so many others in this town. We've had very, very many local town employees, sitting town councilors, town planning board members, diversity equity inclusion members and school committee members that have been so keen to spend their time on issues or expressing their displeasure on issues that frankly haven't even impacted on town. And yet here we are with an actual example of a microaggression that in any other context they would have felt was an act of discrimination or racism. But in this meeting, there has been silence against this act. I just wanna quote a letter recently written, signed by many of the people I just mentioned, who have remained silent. What does your silence tell them and what does your silence mean to this town? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shannon. Do you have Diane back? Are there any other?
No, there are not.
Council Flacott?
Okay. I'd like to give you some context. I was talking to people in Littleton where Mr. Ansaldi was working and I learned that he yelled and shouted at employees, which upset me a lot, that I didn't think that that made for a good town manager. When I had the opportunity to talk to his, uh, staff assistant, I asked him about, I asked her about that. And she said, well, yes, he did get worked up at times. And she would always say to him, and that was her comment. In retrospect, I realized I shouldn't have just said that comment. I should have paraphrased it. I should have paraphrased it because it was insulting. And I was so focused on the yelling and shouting that I didn't focus on that. And I'm sorry.
I have a question. Mary Ann?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You went to Littleton, you interviewed people that he worked with, or they worked for him. Is that a standard procedure to go to a place of somebody's employment to scope out what the person is like? I mean, I've had many positions. I didn't have, you know, people going and looking, gee, how's Mary Ann, you know, to work for, whatever. I've worked for many different walks of life and whatnot. You're gonna get people that sometimes are gonna be hot and heavy. And that is no excuse. But also, you don't inflict the ethnicity, well, gee, you know, he's Italian, or he's Irish, or he's this, he's that. That should never have anything to do with it. I had a job here in this town where I was many times thought of as being connected because my name entered in a vowel. And this particular person, I just let it lie. I says, "If that's what you want to think, you go ahead and think it." Why? Because I drove a, a big Lincoln Town Car and I could throw a body in the trunk? No. I mean, but he consistently said, "You must be connected." And I didn't answer yes, and I didn't answer no, because to me, that would be giving into it. So as far as I'm concerned, the ethnicity comment that you made to Mr. Ansaldi was totally inappropriate. And I also find it being totally inappropriate that a former employee or whatever is going to speak bad of somebody else.
Actually, she was thinking good.
I just caution, I just like to keep cautioned that, you know, people do have to work in those environments. And if we could keep the, the names and positions out of the conversation, I think it'd be appreciated by, by the people in those positions. Thank you.
We have one more back? Okay. Diane?
Diane, can you unmute?
I'm not, I'm not, okay. I'll make this quick because we're table watching. Just very loud. So when-
I'm sorry, Diane, this doesn't seem much-
I'm here, I don't know what's going on, but it keeps going on. Can you get me now?
Yes.
All right. Again, I'm the chairperson of the Commission for Social Justice for the Sons and Daughters of Italy, and I come today, tonight, to really make some comments about Council Flockhart's recent comments during the interview for the town manager. I have listened to many of the townsfolk talk about, you know, their ethnic heritage as well and some of the problems that they encountered growing up or even to this day. But I do want to make a point, I think that this may be a little bit different because any one of Italian-American extraction has a story, right? But, you know, one of the things that my commission's been involved with, of course, our mission is to address any biased discrimination, prejudice, or otherwise ridicule of Italian-Americans. And so I find myself in a position quite frequently where I'm appearing before local boards and commissions and, you know, town, town elected officials. And most recently, because of the controversy about Columbus Day and, you know, a movement to really abolish that day, I find myself making some observations that I'd like to share with you. First of all, one of the things that happens is there's really honestly a, a lack of due process. And as a result, what happens is a lot of Italian-Americans and organizations such as ours get, do not get out of it, those people just come in, express their concerns, and really be listened to. And I say that because I'm glad to see that, you know, at least the council has taken this up tonight. But maybe it really, maybe it really calls for more, you know, more review of this than, you know, appears at, on its surface. The other thing is that during a lot of these meetings, what happens is there's loads of misrepresentations and outright lies told about Columbus with very a, a nod to Italian-Americans or organizations that might provide a different perspective. So what happens? What happens is that the, the other side is, is not heard from. And what you have is the growing denigration of the Italian-American heritage. Because Christopher Columbus, whether people want to believe it or not, is a symbol for Italian-Americans that's inextricably associated with, you know, their rival in this country, their troubles, you know, their concerns, and outright lynchings in the South. And so it's very important that that symbol be maintained. But I bring it up because every denigration of Italian-American, you know, values, characteristics, or whatever, is like a slippery slope. You know, it's something that goes, and I think someone used the word micro, microaggression. It's a little bit more of denigration that helps to sort of create an environment in which that type of thing is allowed and acceptable and, and not addressed. So I think maybe that's what happened. And I don't think Council Flockhart really meant it to be what it turned out to be. But I think that's what's amazing about these microaggressions is that people don't understand that sometimes when you say things that you think are nonoffensive but are, you know, actually just a way to describe a particular situation or ethnic group, that you actually do offend people. And so what I would like to suggest is that, I know that Council Flockhart has made, made her effort to, to offer her explanation for how this happened. And frankly, I've heard a lot about her background. She's done tremendous work in, in terms of public service and serving in a Peace Corps in Africa. And, you know, this is a person who I know has some sensitivities. But when there's a failure of those sensitivities to be exercised, I think it's worth a second look. So one of the things is that, you know, our commission stands ready to really help meet with her, really meet with-
She was doing so well. Thank you, Diane, for your comments. Do you have any other public comment? One more?
Diana Beans?
Diana?
Diana, unmute, please.
Hey, everyone. Thanks for, for taking my call. I'm just, I'm just checking in here.
Precinct two.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So this is just in response to the town manager's comments about the survey, which admittedly I, I may have heard the, the tail end of. I actually don't know anything about the survey and what's being surveyed other than I think it costs a, a few tens of millions or tens of thousands of dollars, which I, I assume that's coming from us. But as a member of, of precinct two, and, and having, having witnessed the previous administration looping of part of Ingles Side Park into the Center Business District, including the backstop of the baseball field, I, I just want to make very, very clear that the citizens of precinct two have zero interest in selling any part of our park to a developer. That's for our kids. And whether we are informed prior to a survey or afterwards, we're, we're not interested and we will be chiming in and making, like, difficult if, if, if it comes to a head. I'm sorry to be so negative, but I do feel like I've been sort of left out of the process as someone who's, who's actually a neighbor of this park. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, Diana.
Point of clarification, if I may, for public comment. I'll take my opportunity for public comment. So I don't know where the figures that we just mentioned came from, but I've said I've gotten three proposals to bring before the council. And this is for the vacant building excluding the rink that's been vacant for six years. I've known nothing about anything being looped in to the Center Business District from the Ingles Park. So I just want to make sure-
I think the thought there was that if you look at the new map that we've had recently or whatever, it includes, the plot line goes out to, I think, home plate of the baseball fields there. And I think that's Diana's concern, and I think a lot of people's concern. And I think hopefully that will be ratified and changed when we take out a parcel and then we-
So I just want to be clear, because if I don't correct it right away, it gets out there on Facebook and then it's, I'm taking kids' parks away and it's not my intention. So just want to be on record. Thank you for your time.
It's actually all Terry's fault. He's taken it. Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong. The gentleman going back a hundred years ago that owned that land and left it to the town, from what I understand, that land was all recorded, deeded, measured, surveyed, and it could never be touched for a hundred years or something. I think, I don't know who the gentleman was. But there's already, someone said that on record at the, at the registry of deeds, the size of that property, and nothing could ever be done to the measurements of that property. Is that, my co, is that?
I think that's what we're looking at and finding out. And I think we've, you know, I think the council took a vote several years ago to, to exclude the rink, which I think is, personally, I think is part of the park. And I think the town manager said that we're looking at the land. It seems to be a consensus that the middle school building is not part of the park.
It doesn't come down to consensus. It comes down to-
Well, we're looking. This is what we're doing. We're trying to get-
The land that got it and deeded back a hundred years.
I think that's why we hire engineers and surveyors. I don't think you're, you're a certified surveyor and I don't think anyone in the room is. And I'm not certainly a certified surveyor. So we have to actually rely on these professionals to make sure we get it right. Government's job is to get it right, and that's what we're trying to do.
But that, my question was, is there not in place, at the registry of deeds, the size of that land going back a hundred years already in place to look at? Or are you gonna resurvey it?
We have a recording statute in the state of Massachusetts and everything has to be recorded. What was recorded a hundred years ago, I can't tell you. But I could tell you, the surveyors look at all the deeds. So that's what I can tell you. But I'd be loved to debate it after the meeting if you'd like to continue.
Last call for public comment.
One.
Yes, absolutely.
He's an asset to this town, without a doubt.
Talking to me?
Not Skip.
Wait, Skip or Chief? Clarify your comments, please. Thank you.
Get out of the way.
Thank you. Thank you. Just, uh, I'll mention a few public relations and I'll pass it around to the council for theirs. April 27th, 2022 Charter and Ordinance Review Committee Public Hearing. So that will be coming up for the public. They also meet, I believe, every Wednesday night at 6 o'clock.
6:15.
6:15-ish. And, and those are all open to the public. April 26th, 2022 Winthrop Spring Forum. There will be discussion about the budget and how the spending matters. The council meeting will begin at 6:00 and the Spring Forum will begin at 7:00. I do thank you all for being here. I mean, it's, it's quite a lot of time out of your night and I appreciate it. And we do appreciate your comments and, and take them, I take, I could speak for all of us, I think, take them very seriously. I will go around. Council Honan, do you have anything you wish to say? Council Fusillo? Council Munson?
I do, thank you. I mean, I'm saying this both as a town councillor and as a resident. I think this has been a, a pretty heated evening. And I think that I'm glad to hear some laughter and some levity to it, but it is pretty serious. We're talking about a major racial, I wouldn't say a racial slur, but I would say it was, it was an insult to Italian heritage. And I, I may not be Italian, but I took offense to it as well. And while Todd may say that we're all sitting here silent, I have a lot of feelings from this, too. I would not be a part or be of, of any vote or support any form of discrimination against Italians of any ethnicity, of any religion, of any color, of any gender, sexuality. I just wouldn't be a part of it.
Excuse me, council speaker.
Sorry. And I think that you have to look at this in the big picture. There are a lot of gaffes, and there's also a lot of, of character issues. So when we look at Barbara and look at her as, like, did she make a verbal gaffe and speak out of turn? Or is she actually harboring racist feelings? And if she were harboring racist feelings, I would not be a part, I would not want her to stay on board either. But from what I can tell, this was just a verbal gaffe. It was a bad mistake during a public interview, and she made a big mistake. But I have no reason, from what I've interacted with her since being on board, as well as from her track record and her service, public record service, she does not come off to me as racist or harboring any racist feelings. So I'm asking you guys to try to show some compassion and see the big picture. And I really do feel like it has been a hard evening to reveal some of these feelings and stories. And I feel as though it's important to kind of give context to it, too. I think she made a verbal mistake. And I don't think that she's done a great job of apologizing for the, she's made an apology for the statement, but she hasn't really come clean as to who she is as a person. And I think that's what you're not hearing. She's a good person. She doesn't feel that way. Hey, she voted for an Italian tonight. We have a new town manager that's an Italian. This is a big night, and it's a good night for, for Winthrop. We should celebrate. Well, that's true. That's true. I apologize. And they were all good. They were all good candidates. So thank you again for getting three good candidates to the executive search committee. Thank you guys very much. There was not one bad choice. But I, I just want to just ask for a little bit of grace and compassion.
With all due respect, that's your opinion?
That is. That's his opinion.
I don't agree with it. That's not my opinion. You cannot have your opinion. But I totally disagree with your opinion. I swear that on record.
Council Belcher? Council DiMarco?
Against my best advice personally, I'll probably say something. So one thing that really stood out to me tonight was Billy Schmidt's comment that, Billy, you said you wouldn't know that you were half-Italian. You know, whether your name's Schmidt, whether it's DiMarco, whether, whatever it is, you don't know somebody's background. You don't know what they are. You know, nobody would know that Rob DiMarco comes from Jewish heritage. That my grandmother, I had a bubby. I didn't have a grandmother. I had a bubby. So, you know, when, when, when dealing with issues like this, come from a place of love. Come from a place of heart. Not everything is as it seems. You can't judge a book by its cover. I know that sounds so cliche, but it's true. Okay? So just whenever dealing with issues like this, come, come from heart, come, come from love. That's all I got to say.
Council Flockhart? Council, uh, Vice President Ruggiero?
In the spirit of public relations, on Saturday, May 7th, Winarc will be having its, well, after two-year hiatus, Winarc will be having its annual run, walk, or roll event around the brand-new Miller Field. It's a, it's an annual fundraiser that they usually put on. And hopefully, it's as well-attended as this meeting.
I have a motion for adjournment. Motion by Council Belcher, second by Council DiMarco. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Nice having you. Thank you.